This evening, I want to thank God for each of you for making this a priority for you today. We're all kind of moving fast. There was a lot going on and we're trying to get it all in at this time, especially for those of us who came out of general conference. And we've had such a wonderful response to an historic general conference. And so it gave us an opportunity for us to begin to recalibrate. We gave the Northeastern Episcopal District a reprieve from meetings and gatherings prior to this one, so that we could just have a breather to focus on our lives, our personal ministries, our families, and the things that were required of us to do. And so I want to thank you for being as you have always been, such a cooperative people, such a joyful people. And it is my great privilege, that of the supervisor as well, to be returned to the Northeastern Episcopal District for the purpose of carrying out ministry that God has assigned to our hands. So I'm praying that we will during this period, exercise all of the necessary rules of camera protocol. Please remember, we were sharing this the other day with those in London. Please remember that you're on camera. So if you get up, take your camera off, put your glamour shot on, we don't want to see how you're looking from the waist down. We don't want to see you coming back in with your coffee and whatever else you're doing. Please, that's more information than any of us need to have, okay? So just make sure that you keep your personal stuff, your personal stuff. And we'll all be the better for it, okay? All right. And I also wanted to say that we are keeping big prayers up. There were so many of you who changed schedules to make sure that you could be here. I want to give a special shout out to the Reverend Larry Davis, who's down in Mount Holly, New Jersey. This is his third anniversary. And so they have their anniversary service. They had one earlier. And then this evening at five, they begin with the Reverend Scott Moore of Judah Temple here in the DMV Philadelphia Baltimore Conference will be preaching. And so as we leave one program, we'll go into another program. But we're grateful that they made some adjustments so that they could be with us also today. Even as we prepare for this service and our teachings, our prayers go out to those who are struggling in the Delta region, dealing with Hurricane Ida coming in. Let's pray that God and the winds will be merciful unto them. We're praying for those trying to get out of Afghanistan. All of our attention seems to have gone there for the nation for a minute. But there are a lot of people that are trying to get out of situations that they are not in control of. You know, those in trafficking, those who are dealing with impoverishment, and those who have now this new onus upon them to find a place to live if they lift the moratorium on mortgages and rents. So I mean, we have a lot to be praying for. So as we come together, let us be mindful of all of those who are dealing with circumstances beyond their immediate capacity control. And always know that the one who controls it all sits high, looks low. Hey, he's still got us in the palm of his hand. Now, having said that, we're not going to go into devotional. I hope you were in church today somewhere online and you spent a couple of times going from church to church so that you get a whole lot of word and singing in you. So we're not going through the devotionals that we normally would. I want to get straight into the substance of why we called you together. Because it is important that we have an update on two areas of concern for tonight's town hall. Medicine and money. And to have the people to do that, I'll share just a bit with you about them in a moment. But the supervisor, I believe, is with us somewhere. Would you greet us at this time?
Praise God from whom our blessings flow. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. I'm getting some message that I didn't quite understand. But at any rate, thank you Bishop, to the presiding elders, general, and connectional officers, past and present pastors, ministers, minister spouses, widows and widowers, missionaries, Christian educators, laity, to all of you, my brothers and sisters gathered. I greet you in the marvelous name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ, and welcome you to our town hall gathering. Special, special welcome to my dearly beloved cousin, Minister Arthur Wilson. I am overjoyed and beyond grateful for your presence today. Special, special welcome also to Reverend Dr. Latisha Godette. I understand that cousins of yours are connected also. So this is truly a family affair. And I am believing God for a tremendous blessing. I'm already blessed just to be yet alive, to see your beautiful, lovely, smiling faces. I thank the tech team over and over for keeping us connected. But since this is our first gathering after the general conference, I really would like to take this opportunity to just say thank you to the Northeastern Episcopal family. Thank you for all of your kind words, your emails, texts, welcome back cards and notes, all that we've received. And I want you to know, they have made us feel so wanted and so loved. It's actually the same kind of love and support that we received from all of Bishop's pastorates. And I used to say to them, if this is just an act, you're just trying to fool us, just keep on doing it. Because I love it. It feels so good to feel wanted. I'm saying the same to you, Northeastern. If it's an act, if you're trying to fool us, just keep on doing what you're doing. I want you to know that Bishop and I desire to finish strong in the Northeastern Episcopal District. So we would appreciate your continued love, support, encouragement, cooperation, and most of all, your prayers. Pray that God will continue to keep us, bless our union, smile upon us, keep us in love and harmony, and working together. Because I truly believe that working together works, and we're better together. And get this, God has given us His best. Let's do likewise and give of our best to the master. As my dearly beloved sister Sora would say, "I love you, Northeastern Episcopal District, and there's nothing you can do about it." God bless you, and thank you Bishop for this opportunity to greet our dearly beloved family.
Thank you. Sounds like Dr. Brenda Smith to me.
That was Dr. Brenda Smith.
There's nothing you can do about it. Okay. Thank you so very much. We are so grateful for, I couldn't have said it better, for what the supervisor has expressed in words. This town hall is necessary because there are so many things happening all at the same time. And I had met with the presiding elders and they received a lot of information. And believe it or not, your presiding elders are much more hardline than I am. Because I was proposing that we have everyone sign disclaimers in order to come back into the mix and all of this. And they just said, Bishop, let's just forget all of that. No. We just need to shut down and remain this way until we move through these variants. And I said, oh, okay. You know, because I'm a servant. I'm not an autocrat. So I listened to my council of elders with his wisdom. But then I started getting all these flood of emails from people whose churches are not quite at the level where many other people who've been calling me and postponing reopening come from. So I said, let's get together and talk. It was going to be a fireside chat. And I felt that we could accomplish this together, a small group of us kind of talking. And then all of a sudden, I saw that our numbers, and this is just a few weeks ago, have just ballooned. And so now there are people trying to get on and they're closed out and can't get in. And I'm so sorry, you know, once you get over a thousand or something. And they told me this because that's how Northeast rolls. We never mandate that people come on. We never just threaten people to go on. We just believe that if you're family, you'll want to get together. And as my wife said, that really makes our hearts feel warm, that you want to come together as opposed to being intimidated to come. So thank you so very much. But I have been informed that we'll be able to give you some information later on how to give to your friends who were the latecomers, so that they can go back and watch this program to their heart's content. All right. So wanted to deal with two issues tonight, medicine and money. The first, medicine. We have with us a person who you know in one capacity. But tonight, we want to present her in another capacity, Dr. Latisha Godette. And she is, of course, one of the renowned pastors of our day and age. What she's done down in Greenville, North Carolina, is just short of miraculous with that congregation and the ministry that has gone all over the state of North Carolina, giving out food, stuff, ribs, and steaks, and chicken, and veg, all of this, plus money galore. She is a gifted grant writer. She's a graduate of one of the premier non-HBCUs in the state of North Carolina, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, bachelors of public health, and then her Jewish doctor. Yep, she's a lawyer too, out of Chapel Hill. So you know she can handle her business. Philanthropic owner, business owner. Tonight she comes to us as the president of Orten Dorf Laboratories. One of, if not the leading vaccine distributors in the state of North Carolina right now, privately owned. They are in charge of all of the testing and vaccines at Livingstone College, staff, faculty, students, administrators, you name it, they're handling all of that. They received the contract to do some of this and then turned around and have given Livingstone College nearly a quarter of a million dollars to utilize in operational expenses. That's because ministry is more than just what happens in the pulpit. And so often, people don't think you have much ministry unless you are in a pulpit. But we're seeing now that she took a sabbatical from the pulpit and has been doing such philanthropic work. There are several ministers on this call now who are currently receiving scholarships from her foundation and her family foundation of several thousand dollars per semester to go to school. So we are grateful. And you know, I've always celebrated chaplaincy in our Episcopal area. So we have chaplains that are in the military. We have chaplains that are in the hospitals. We have therapists on the call that are in the hospital setting and community center setting. And then we have chaplains in the police department and the prisons. So every ministry is valid. God uses us in different ways. And never feel that you have to be henpecked, pigeonholed into one form of ministry. She does this, but she doesn't do it by herself. She has a husband who could be known as the husband of the year, Brother Dante Godette, who holds down the home fires, as well as a major managerial corporate responsibility with the government. I mean, so this is what you call the classic dynamic duo. They are able to do all this work. And I want to give him a shout out because when they came to Washington DC, got held up in traffic or some other maladies, group came in, supported her ministry, turned right around, got something to eat, got back on the road. Not one of them was complaining and griping, just a wonderful spirit. And we want to thank God for that. Wherever you have somebody out front, you have somebody in the rear holding things together. They're nearly 30-year marriage. Obviously, hey, it's been well worth it. I'm appreciative for her coming to us tonight. Now y'all know her. You've heard her preach. She can run us, shout us, jump us, but that's not her purpose tonight. Her purpose tonight is to give to us information that can help us. And I'm not going to go into all the places, even now, that she has been requested to come with her company and to administer the vaccines. She'll be doing this for a while, especially since these boosters are coming out. So she's going to handle the medicine part. Then, and she's in Greenville, North Carolina. Keep that in mind for a second. Then, our other presenter tonight is Minister Arthur L. Wilson. You heard my wife put in a plug already. They have a special connection, and indeed, our family does. But he's coming to us tonight, graduate of J.C. Smith University in accounting. And in his former life, and there are a number of you J.C. Smithites, okay, on the line. His former life, he was an auditor with the IRS. Look at all of these screens going out right now. Y'all signing off real quick. Yes, I said IRS, but come back on. You didn't hear the rest of what I had to say. He was responsible for that team. If you remember, those of you who watched Christian television, I wasn't a big Christian television fan then. But when Jim and Tammy Baker and PTL Club was shut down, Arthur Wilson was one of the point persons for the IRS auditing team. But he was like the biblical character Zacchaeus, because God got a hold of him and wrestled with him. And he came down out of the tree saying, "If I've taken anything from any man by false accusation." So now he serves as the CFO of the Park Ministries, the Park Church, formerly University Park Baptist Church in Charlotte, North Carolina, that is at the helm of so many creative ministries in this nation and under the leadership of Bishop Claude Alexander. And so he's there with them. I want to tell you this, most people don't know anything about this. The Park Baptist Church, University Park Baptist Church, was a strong church before. It was strong. But they didn't become the mega church they are now until Arthur Wilson challenged and taught the church the value of Christian and biblical stewardship. And then he turned to the officers and said, almost like, I guess it was Seeley and Color Purple, that you're not going to ever become what you can become until you treat the man of God the way he deserves to be treated with the kind of leadership he's given us. The church repented, received his word, boom. And next thing you know, they blew up. And now they're a mega church. Many of you have been to the mark down in downtown Charlotte that they now, they just have it going on. But because his teaching was that effective. So I could keep on talking about each of our presenters, but they're here. And we wanted them to come in. I was going to do all of this by myself. But obviously, you'll see when they finish that they can do a much better job than I could do in making these presentations. Is Isidore Branch Jr. on the line? If he's on the line, since we start pulling him out of the obscurity and using him as a timekeeper at the general conference. Okay, Izzy, pull your stopwatch out and make sure you could, we want to make sure that we have both of these sessions. They have about 35 minutes or so to do. They know how they want to break it up each. And then we're going to open and have questions, answers. We're going to do that. And then we're going to make our way off. We're not going to stay on here all day, all night. Because if you're like me, you've been in several church services a day. And this is the final one of the day. But this is going to be the best one, because we're going to get great information. Now, we have two moderators. I'm moving away because if I stayed and kept talking, they'd have me so inspired, we'd never get off here. We have two moderators. The first is Reverend Quavon Newton. He is our Episcopal Area COVID-19 Coordinator for the Conference of National Black Churches. So he's going to moderate this first part. And then the second part, the Reverend Dorothy Patterson, who is one of the graduates of Buster Sorey's D-Free Movement, handles a little money. She will be the moderator for the second part of our presentation today. And I'm going to sit on the sideline and let us move on. Some of you have asked about offerings. You know, a lot of times I don't have us do offerings. We just move on. But we will have that at the end of this program so that everybody will be able to seed back into. Because we don't bring these people here without giving them a gift. We believe in planting into good soil always. All right. Having said that, let's go to Quavon Newton and he will present Dr. Godette.
Thank you Bishop. And we were all wondering when you were going to let us know how we could give. We were just waiting for that information. Thank you. I am honored to welcome Reverend Dr. Latisha Hill Godette. She's already been introduced. But I will say that during the pandemic, she was one that I know that I'm not the only one who was inspired by and learned from. As she was able to pull just as many views as some mega churches, just as many shares and comments. So she's certainly mastered being able to attract people to these virtual spaces. So she's going to give her presentation. And after that, we will allot about 15 minutes for questions. In order to go into the queue for questioning, you're going to utilize the Zoom Raise Your Hand feature. And when you raise your hand, we will then see you, put you in the queue, and allow you to ask your questions. And we have one of the best timekeepers in Zion, who's going to keep us in time. Thank you. Now I turn it over to Reverend Dr. Latisha Hill Godette.
Wonderful. Thank you Bishop Proctor and Missionary Supervisor Proctor for this opportunity to come and greet the Northeastern Episcopal District. I feel like this is my home. I was born in Asbury Park, New Jersey. And I do, Missionary Supervisor, have two cousins who are pastors. And let me say hello to Reverend Janet Jones and Reverend Nicole Harris, my biological cousins. And then also my spiritual sister, Sister Carrie. We thank God for her and her father, Bishop Thompson. They were my spiritual parents, Bishop Thompson and Mrs. Thompson. And she still makes sure I'm doing all right now. So I definitely want to greet my sister, Sister Carrie. All of you, I do consider a family. And so I wanted to start by saying that my husband, I don't know if he made it on, but I preached last night here in surrounded area of Greenville, North Carolina. And I sent my husband to Charlotte, North Carolina on official Latisha Hill Godette Ministries, our outreach ministry and our foundation. And so he went to Charlotte and we split up. And so I don't know if he's able to make it on. He did go and we were able to bless a young person from Little Rock Amy Zion Church with a car. And that's part of one of the things we do, provide financial resources. And so I don't know if my husband is able to make it on, but I do want to make this presentation with him. So on behalf of my husband and me, let me start by saying thank you to Bishop Proctor and the Northeastern Episcopal District. When we were flooded and we had 18 people living in our house, when our families had nowhere to go, Bishop Proctor and the Northeastern Episcopal District, you were the first to give and you sent a check for $5,000. We want to say thank you for helping us when we were homeless. Thank you for helping us when our families were displaced. And so we would like to start by giving back today. And we would like to make a donation of $25,000. We want to use this money to help pastors who are going to be approved for reentry according to the task force and co-signed by Bishop Proctor. This $25,000 will be used at the discretion of Bishop Proctor and the task force. But we want to make sure we are sowing a seed everywhere we go. And we want you to know that we understand that it's difficult when you are displaced, you're outside of the sanctuary, and you want to go back. You write your proposal. You say, we want to go back. We want to make sure that our sanctuaries are clean, that we have extra masks, that we have PPE for people. And your churches will require professional cleaning. That's easier said than done. If your churches are struggling and you do not have the resources, the finances to provide for professional cleaning, what do you do? And so we want to sow the seed, $25,000, to help pastors who may be struggling, churches who are struggling, to pay for the professional cleaning. So you will be able to go back into your sanctuaries after you are approved, your proposal is approved by the task force and the bishop.
Dr. Godette, you can stop right there and go ahead. Thank you. Get the check in. And we just let you come back some other time and let you start all over again. $25,000? Amen. Can we give her a hand for seeding? See, we didn't know when we put a seed in the ground for them that it was going to come back a harvest for us. Wow. Okay, go ahead. Continue. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Now he has me nervous. See, I'm nervous. Definitely. Again, that's, we're going to meld the check. And we do want you to know that we want to help you. The next thing we want to do is if you are a pastor and you are at the bottom of your district when it comes to the rank, you know, when they're giving protocol and they say to the bishops, presiding elders, every pastors, every minister of every rank and file, and they number the churches on the district. If you're watching, I know that Bishop Proctor said there's about 1,000 people on. And so if you are watching and you are a pastor and you're at the bottom of your district, if you're on and you're a pastor and you are the last church that's listed on your district. I read somewhere that the first shall be last and the last shall be first. If you are on and you drop your name in the chat right now, I want my assistant who's on, Sister Arjane Jones Williams, pay attention. Whoever drops their name in the chat now, if you are at the bottom, we want to personally go ahead and also sow $1,000 straight to you, pastor. I mean, if you are the last on your district, the last, and you're on right now, that $1,000 is going directly to you. The $25,000 is going into the Episcopal District, but that $1,000 is going to go directly to you, pastor. If you say my name is never called, nobody ever knows what we're struggling with, how to help us, that $1,000 is going to you. If you are the last pastor on your district and you're on right now, drop your name in the chat in my ministry, the assistant, Sister Arjane Jones Williams. She will record it and we will make sure you get the $1,000. Now, thank you again. And we want to sow a seed back into you. My task is not to preach to you, and it's really not to teach you. I have been tasked with having a conversation with you. I'm blessed to be able to serve as the president of Orten Dorf Laboratories. And we have been tremendously blessed to receive two competitive contracts. One, we are going all around the state of North Carolina, providing free COVID-19 testing to historically marginalized populations. We partner with shelters. We partner with historically black universities like Livingstone College, St. Augustine University, Winston-Salem State University, and anyone who calls for our service when they're having a pop-up event. Not only that, we were able to secure a vaccination contract, where we go and we provide vaccines to people who are in need. We started our own incentives where we provide people who are being tested and vaccinated with $10 bills, with food, a hot meal, and Governor Roy Cooper, with federal funds from the Biden administration. We also provide $100 gift cards to people who are being vaccinated. Why are we taking all of these extra measures? Why are we doing extra means? Because it is critical that we stress, everybody needs to get vaccinated. The vaccines are not designed to stop COVID-19. When we go around and we face vaccine hesitancy, many people tell us, "Why should I get the vaccine when people are testing positive even after getting the vaccine?" And this Delta variant is disrespectful. And so we are faced with questions and we're forced to give answers. And so we educate people to let them know, it doesn't guarantee that you won't test positive for COVID-19. But the science proves that if you are fully vaccinated and you do test positive for COVID-19, especially the Delta variant, you have a greater chance of living and not dying. Now, that's the realest way I can present it to you. You also have a greater chance of staying out of the hospital. So as we approach reentry and entering churches, we must make sure that we, as faith leaders, pastors, presiding elders, bishops, we are stressing, you need to be fully vaccinated. We also need a procedure to track these vaccinations. I know everybody says we should be on the honor system when it comes to church folks, but do you know church folks who lie? And it is no difference with the vaccine. So as you are drafting your proposal to present to the task force, you need to make sure that you will physically, that you will see some vaccination cards. Yes, even in the church. We cannot go back into the church on the honor system. We must stress this because it could save lives. We are not- We are not in the business of just saving souls. We should be concerned about saving souls and bodies. Now, I know the pressure that's being felt by bishops, presiding elders, and pastors. You have pastors who are on the ground level and they're saying, I don't have people in the pews and people are not being faithful in their giving. We have to be careful that we don't turn profits into being for-profit. The profit is not for-profit. I understand you have assessments, you have deals. I have been a pastor for the last eighteen years. I know. But we don't want to end up like Amosiah when Amos had the confrontation. And he said, listen, I'm not for-profit. I was minding my business working and the Lord called me. As we reenter, remember that the Lord has called you and people are dying and the numbers are not being reported. The Delta variant is now attacking our children. Twenty-two percent of the new cases since July nineteenth. Our children are testing positive. And so you may say, but schools are reopening all over the country. You need to understand that Trump left the White House, but Trumpism is still in the White House. People are putting profits before people and they're putting profits before our children. And our children are testing positive. Our children are getting sick and our children are dying. The school systems, colleges, they have figured out if we reopen and we go back, that means we will be able to receive federal dollars. So they have a plan. We'll reopen. We'll test. We'll wear masks. We'll put strong strict protocols in place and stay open as long as possible. And then we'll receive these federal dollars. As the church, we cannot use the same model. Do you remember when President Trump said that our elders, our seniors would have to make a sacrifice? That some would have to die? Now, Trump is out the White House, but we're saying the same thing. Let me ask you a question, grandmother. Let me ask you a question, big mama. Let me ask you a question. Do you have some daddy's girls, daddies? Is your daughter's life worth sacrificing? It's coming down to people dying and we as a church can't follow the world. We are supposed to be the game changers and the atmosphere shifters. And so my expert opinion, yes, I support reentry. I support Bishop Proctor and his decision to allow the Task Force to review proposals. But I want to stress that everything is subject to change. As I pastored the last eighteen years, all of our programs had a statement that this worship service is subject to change by the movement of the Holy Spirit. You need to understand that even if the Task Force approves your proposal and you are allowed to reenter, everything is subject to change. New information is being poured in daily. And we have historically black universities and other colleges who are not reporting the outbreaks that they have already had. And we've only been in for two weeks, some one week. They're not reporting because they're trying to stay open as long as possible. Some are saying if we could just drag it out to Labor Day, how many students would die before Labor Day? Everything must be subject to change. We must exercise our faith while being safe. We believe in miracles and science. And so if new information arises, if the death tolls arise, we must understand that you may be asked to go back virtual. I also want you to keep in mind that everybody will not be able to reenter, even if you are approved. You must make sure that you adhere to the protocols that have been put in place and continue to socially distance, even when you return to your sanctuaries. Make sure that you're not letting everybody in the sanctuary. And when they get in the sanctuary, make sure that they are sitting apart. And pastors, please stop telling people to talk to their neighbors. Let everyone examine their own selves and work out their own soul salvation. We don't need to talk to our neighbors. Make sure you're checking temperatures. Make sure you are keeping a record of everybody reentering. Make sure you have contact information in case you do need to report an outbreak. And I won't go through all the protocols because the Task Force has been put in place and they're doing an excellent job. But I need to stress that just because you're going back in, we are still in the midst of a pandemic. I know you heard Bishop say everybody's praying for Afghanistan, but I hope we're still praying for our churches and these families and these seniors and these elders and our babies right here in the United States, right here in the Northeastern Episcopal District, Ground Zero, where it all began, the hotbeds. I thank Bishop Proctor and Missionary Supervisor Proctor for their excellent, swift leadership, despite what everybody else did. They made some hard decisions and I know we're still faced with these hard decisions, but the numbers do not lie. Children are being affected from thirty-eight thousand cases in July. Now we're up to one hundred and eighty thousand cases. Children testing positive. The numbers do not lie. I need you all to understand that if you're asked to pivot, it doesn't mean that you're a failure. It doesn't mean that you just give up and you're still faced with the problem. Well, how are we going to get money? How are we going to be able to take care of our assessments, the church building? If you're having a hard time, if you're struggling, then prepare yourself now. If the Delta variant that has quadrupled the numbers in children, prepare that if it continues, that we may have to go one hundred percent virtual. Get your paperwork in order. Many churches were not able to apply for the PPP, the SBA loans, because they did not have their paperwork in order. Don't wait until the new money is released. Take steps to get it in order now. And so I wanted this to be a conversation. I wanted to stress to you the new cases. I want to stress to you how deadly the Delta variant is, the Lambda variant is. I want to stress to you how important it is that we continue to wear our masks, that we don't put profits over people. I want to stress to you that all the information is not being told. They are still covering deaths and increased cases because of politics. But I also want to have a conversation with you. Reverend Quayvon will now moderate and I'll answer some questions and then I'll come back for closing remarks.
Thank you. Thank you for challenging us to exercise both our faith as well as being safe. I do want to thank once again our bishop and missionary supervisor for listening to the voice of God. Because it was evident in your first thirty seconds that this invitation was within the will of God. So thank you for that. We will allot fifteen minutes starting now. A timekeeper is going to keep us on target and on time. You can begin raising your hand if you have a question. And we do have one coming now from P. Shark.
Good afternoon. Can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
I would like to know, Dr. Goodett, does the reopening or the proposal to reopen include not just worship? How about meetings and having community groups come into the church as well? Are those subject to the protocols that are being set up by the Task Force?
Any, any activity that will happen in churches who are reentering has to be approved by the Task Force and ultimately approved by Bishop Proctor. He has put a dynamic Task Force in place. I have reviewed the protocols and to make sure that we are paying attention to the science and that we are being safe while we exercise our faith. And so any activity, because any activity can cause an outbreak. Any activity, especially when we're in close proximity, can cause an outbreak and increase cases. So be mindful that even if you're approved to go back into the sanctuary, you need to submit a proposal for any type of extracurricular activities or events that you have in your sanctuaries. Great question. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is coming from Reverend Arthur Holloway.
Thank you, Doctor Goodett. This is amazing. This is amazing. But my question is, with the Delta virus still lingering and now this new Lambda, and they're talking about this booster shot, can you talk to us just for a brief moment how important the booster shot is and what exactly will it do inside of our bodies to help us fight this new variants?
Yes, great question, Presiding Elder Holloway. And so right now, we have only been approved to give the booster shot to people who have immune systems that are already compromised. And so it has not been approved for everybody just yet. But we are encouraging those who are eligible to receive the booster shot. It's just as an added level of protection. And we want to make sure that you're able to do it. Everyone who has been approved to give vaccinations, they're also eligible to give the booster shots. And so it is no new type of medicine. It's ultimately the same vaccine. If you were vaccinated with Moderna, you need to get a booster shot of Moderna. If you were vaccinated with Pfizer, you need to get a booster shot of Pfizer. And so that is what we are recommending. Now, I do want to say this, Presiding Elder Holloway, great question. Science has proven that the Moderna actually seems to be more effective fighting the Delta variant. So thank you. Excellent question. Is there another?
You can ask your question now for the show.
Yes, good evening. Thanks so much, ma'am. Thank you. Is it true that even being vaccinated or having no symptoms, you could be a carrier of the COVID?
Yes. People who are asymptomatic, they do not show any symptoms. They are the biggest spreaders of COVID-19 and especially the Delta variant. The Delta variant has about a four-day incubation period. So you can actually infect people and you're contagious up to four days before you even realize that you have. And I feel like the more I talk, the more Bishop Proctor and the Presiding Elders are saying, wait a minute, maybe we need to rethink this reentering. But it's serious and I want you to know how serious it is. And I did talk to Bishop Proctor when he asked me to do this assignment and I let him know, even though I have reviewed the proposal, the Task Force recommendations, I am here to stress that this is serious. The young people, my daughter, but we have a daughter that's a therapist in Charlotte. She just graduated last year from UNC Charlotte. She's a licensed therapist. But she keeps me here and she says, Mom, the Delta variant is disrespectful. Delta is disrespectful. And so I need to stress importance of not thinking that this is a party, not throwing a homecoming celebration and saying, we're back. No, you need to be very careful when you're going back. Make sure you're wearing a mask even if you are fully vaccinated. Make sure you're washing your hands. My grandmother would turn over in her grave because we have to actually tell people to wash their hands. So make sure you're washing your hands. Make sure you're using hand sanitizers. Make sure you're socially distancing. In the microphones, everybody likes to pass the mic. No, if you are approved to go back in, no more passing the mic. And if somebody else needs to use the microphone, make sure you're using Clorox Wet Wipes, wiping it off. Make sure you buy the disposable microphone covers to put on and off. Don't even allow people to use the same cover. So it is serious and is very contagious. Is there another question?
Assistant Billy Nixon, you can ask your question then.
This has been fabulous information. And my question is around the Task Force protocol and when people are coming back, if they get approved. As part of the protocol, given that we've been virtual for over a year, when we come back to the church, I work in higher education and we're back, you know, full force. And there's been some missing items in terms of how do we address, how do we address keeping virtual as part of what we do? And one of the things I'm thinking of, you know, in a church setting is, you know, a lot of us prior to the pandemic weren't doing Facebook Live with our services, but we are outreach to more people right now than we could have imagined because of that. So in the protocol, does it help, is it sharing what people should be keeping in place to not just go back in person, but to also not lose what we gained as, you know, as what I see as a positive even during the pandemic, being virtual?
Maybe you should bring me back for another session. The protocol, the standards are really dealing with people reentering and how we are going to be safe while we're exercising our faith. And so that you're actually talking about something that's similar but two separate issues. We need to be mindful, as I already said in the presentation, that everybody will not reenter. Even if you are approved to reenter, you will still have some members who are just elderly, sick, compromised, diabetes, heart problems, strokes. You will have some cancer patients, cancer survivors. You will have some people with some sicknesses, illness and diseases, and they may need to stay home. And then you may just have some people who, they, it's not a spirit of fear. Please pastors, do not get in a pulpit. God has not given you a spirit of fear, but God has given you a spirit of power, love and a sound mind. God gave you common sense as well. So do not make people feel guilty because they may not be ready to reenter. Some people are dealing with post-traumatic stress disorder. Some people have had so many people to die. And it's just, they have anxiety and anxiety attacks. So everybody may not be willing to come back. Do not make them feel as if they don't have enough faith.
And Doctor Goodett, let me piggyback on you so that I won't let them take all of your time and say, since that's a question that probably I would answer. We have shared with all the Presiding Elders and at every conference with all of the pastors, everything in ministry going forward for all of our churches must be based around the virtual platform. All of our churches, for the most part, where you have creative pastors, are doing better in the virtual space than they were in the physical space. So even when we go back into the physical space, we will carve that around the virtual space because most of our churches need to do that. You have more members attending service every Sunday, more finances coming through than you were coming through the plate in most instances. Now, if you lazy and indolent, you're not doing it. But if you're creative and energetic, it's happening. So that has been the message that has gone out, my sister, that we are going to keep this. Virtualism is never going away. We must adapt to it. And those of us who were slow to do it, now we must catch up to the rest of the pace. I'm finished. Go right ahead. Next question.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bishop.
This is Tom Lynn. May I ask you a question now?
So much, Dr. Goodett, for this information. It is extremely valuable, extremely helpful. My question is around the Lambda variant. What is known about it and how virulent is it in terms of damage it causes?
And so most of the studies are being done around the Delta variant, but they have, the CDC has put Lambda on their watch and it's more of a watch variant. But Delta is the one that's causing all the issues and all the problems and is affecting people who are already fully vaccinated and is specifically attacking our children. So I don't want to alarm you too much with the Lambda because they're still researching, they're still studying, and there is a different test that they have to do in order to detect it. So right now, it's just, you can call it like on the watch list. So I would do, I have information that has been provided to us from our medical doctor. If you will put your email address in the chat, I will just simply forward you that information so you can read it and you can read what scientists know.
Thank you so much. I will do that.
And Sister Arjane, if you're still on, would you please record her email address? Thank you.
Reverend Greg Almous, may I ask you a question?
Thank you very much, Dr. Goodett and Dr. Newton. Dr. Goodett, you indicated in terms of the Delta virus, that it takes about four days to really become detected. I'm not sure what that means in terms I'm not sure what that means in terms of being able to determine whether or not a person coming into the sanctuary is actually a carrier. Does it have to be a time lapse that we need to know about if a person comes in with a vet with a card saying they were vaccinated? Do they have to have a test after that within a week to come into the sanctuary? I'm not sure how that timeframe would work.
Now, I'm not here to answer the specific protocols. You have a wonderful task force that has been put in place by Bishop Proctor, and they will deal with the specific guidelines as you move forward, or if you're allowed to move forward. And let me stress that just because you submit a proposal for reentry, it does not mean that you will be approved to reenter. It does not mean that the task force will approve and make the recommendation to the bishop, because you have to have thought-out guidelines, protocols, and again, the ability to pay for cleaning, people, volunteers. You have to have your paperwork together, your plan together. So, I don't want anybody to think that just because Bishop Proctor is finally allowing this, and he's done it with much prayer and research, consultation, processing, and analyzing, that it doesn't mean that you're just going to go back. So, those specific questions are really questions that I should leave for the task force to answer. But I will say this, there's obviously no way for you to know, and this is why it's such a difficult decision, because a person can actually be contagious and infect other people with the Delta variant four days before they actually test positive. So, there is no way to know. So, what do I recommend? That you take it seriously, that you make sure you are checking the temperatures, and at least that you will catch people who have signs. And I also want to say this, why do you send your children to school knowing that they are sick? Why do you send your children to school if they have a cold, if they have runny nose, a temperature, upset stomach, diarrhea? Keep them home. And let's do the same thing when it comes to going to church. If you know you have symptoms. I know everybody wants to get back in. Some people say they can't. Feel the spirit unless they're inside the church building. But God is God everywhere. And we that worship the Lord must worship Him in spirit and in truth. And so, if you are sick, if you have any symptoms, if you have been around someone who has tested positive, the easy answer is, my brother, stay home, because there's no definitive way to tell.
Thank you so much, Dr. Goddett. Reverend Quayvon, let me jump in here. I'm not taking part of their time. Neil, add the time back. But as I stated earlier about camera etiquette, so I'm scrolling through, I'm seeing all of these things happening, people going to the store, people going to the car pulling out money, people sleeping, people doing whatever, whatever. Please don't have me try to have them have you blocked off this, okay? And I don't know how that works, but, and don't be distracting, you getting up, walking out, getting coffee coming. Nah, we don't want to see all of that. Just put your camera. Do you understand what I'm saying? Y'all understand what I'm saying? You know me. You don't be straight. Okay, so let's not, don't cause, we got little guests on here. They don't need to see the other part. Okay, so use etiquette, y'all? Okay, continue with the question.
You have the heart of God, because you could have said, don't make us highlight you. But instead, you showed some grace. So, we want to thank you, Bishop, for having grace. This is the final question. We do have to stay on target and task, because we have to respect our second presenter and the questions that will come after that. I'm very, very sure Reverend Dr. Goddett would have no problem answering questions after. But after the Reverend Dr. Alfred Carson, we will then proceed.
Yes. Thank you, Reverend Newton, and thank you, Dr. Goddett, for your presence here, and especially for your spirit and generosity. My question today deals with vaccine hesitancy. And I would like for you to speak to or dispel some of the myths that is surrounding the hesitancy that is within our community. For example, I have heard with, part of the hesitancy may have to do with some young ladies may feel that the vaccine may affect their reproductive system. There was a nurse who has been hospitalized, who was carrying a child and expecting, but yet was hesitant, did not receive the vaccine, and therefore, she is now in ICU with the unborn child. She was afraid that the vaccine would have damage of her unborn. I just wanted you to speak to that, because we have a lot of our people who are hesitant.
Yes, we do. So, you heard about one of the contracts that we have with the state of North Carolina. We specifically target historically marginalized populations, brown and black people. And we go into shelters, homeless communities. We go on a tent city in Greensboro, North Carolina, where you have people living in tents in the woods, where you have people living under trees. And so, we are intentional about reaching underserved and vulnerable populations. Going into these populations, we have been cursed. We have had things thrown at us. We have been ostracized. We have had people try to damage our cars. We've had Christians say that we are doing the devil's work, that I'm not going to defile my body. I had one of my friends say, if you ate a McDonald's chicken nugget, you have already defiled your body. You're defiling your body with all the food that you put in your body, and you want to talk about a vaccine? You don't know what they're putting in food. You don't know what they're putting in other things. One of the things that I tried to stress is that at least one of the vaccinations were developed in large part by a black woman. I like to stress that we are not set up with faith and religion or spirituality against science. We believe that all of it works hand in hand together. We like to deal with the facts. And so, when people come to me and they ask, they come with all the rumors, all the conspiracy theories, just like they said, you didn't need to use 5G, and the end of the world was coming, but y'all still went and got those new iPhones. And so, we come with all these conspiracy theories. I like to redirect them back to the science and the evidence. So, when they come and they say, well, Uncle Junebug said, and Pookie Ray Ray and them said, I like to redirect them to the science and the evidence and the statistics. Can you show me? Or did you just hear this on the street? While we were at General Conference, I had a meeting with a wonderful group of young people, about eight of them at General Conference, led by Christopher Heimy. He helped us and Bestina. They gathered some young people for us, and I gave them a workshop to teach them how to educate other young people. And one of the most important tools is not to go tit for tat, not to get into arguments. Don't fuss. The same way you shouldn't beat somebody over the head when you're trying to evangelize. Don't beat them over the head with the Bible. You have to, number one, live the life. Let them know your personal testimony. Are you vaccinated, and how it affected you and other family members? And then, direct them to the science. And so, most of the things that we're hearing, these conspiracy theories, there's no evidence. There's no proof. And so, there is no evidence or proof that any of that is true, Presiding Elder. And so, what I recommend is what we do every day. We direct them back to the real statistics, the science, the evidence, and make them prove it to us what they heard.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Could you just, I know you placed your contact information in the chat. We have a few people who have called in. Could you audibly give us your contact information if they were to have any questions after this, and then we'll wrap up?
I will. And so, I did put it in the chat, but my number is 980-445-9351. You may not get me directly, but if you would like, I have wonderful assistance. Leave me a message, and we will make sure you get the information you need. You can text that number. You can call, text. You can give us your email address, or again, my assistant. And thank you for all the people from North Carolina. If I would have known they had a cap, I would not have given you the Zoom information. We thank God for all the supporters of our ministry. My assistant is on, and if you have put anything down, your information, we will contact you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Northeastern Episcopal District, we do want to thank you for this profound presentation that was based on faith and facts. Certainly appreciate you. And I know you said you have a part two. I know you've got a part three as well. I'm pretty sure we'll be hearing from you again. Thank you.
Again, I do thank you, Bishop Proctor, Missionary Supervisor Proctor, the entire Northeastern Episcopal District. Again, I feel like you are my whole, our family, and this was simply to stress the seriousness of the Delta variant. I had to be obedient to the task and the assignment. I didn't want Bishop Proctor to get me straight, like he got everybody else straight about this camera etiquette. But I do have a part two. I do have a part three and some other things that I do in some educational sessions. So, if you are also interested, you can drop us a note in the chat. Thank you, Bishop Proctor.
We'll have you back. You'll be back. Yeah.
Thank you. And now, we're going to transition and turn it over to Reverend Dorothy Patterson.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, we take this opportunity to greet you all and say thank you to Bishop Dennis B. Proctor and Missionary D. Diane Proctor. And thank you, Dr. Lujette, for all that information you have just given us, Goddett. It was definitely valuable. It is my pleasure to introduce and present, Bishop has already given us some outline on Minister Wilson, and I do want to take this opportunity to thank him once again. I had an opportunity to meet him a few weeks ago. And so, the information that he gave then is still valuable today. So, let me just say that Minister Wilson is the Chief Financial Officer for the Park Church in Charlotte, North Carolina. He advises churches and countless believers in the area of finance, and has fostered their emergence, fostered their emergence out of debt into implementing sound financial practices that has stimulated both growth and stability. I think that in itself is an awesome thing. In addition to that, one of the things that he does when he schedules workshops and trainings, et cetera, he do a thing that's called good. And it is really good, and I want to say that to you again. It is good. Get out of debt. That is so important, getting out of debt. And so, we will use the same protocol that has just been set up for us prior, the 15 minutes. Minister Wilson will give you 15 minutes, and you talk about this awesome platform and initiative that you have to get individuals, get churches out of debt, so that we are able to move in a place of, not necessarily, I'm using the word prosperity, but a place that we can really do ministry. So, I present and introduce to some of you Minister Arthur Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Patterson. I really appreciate that introduction. Again, I bring you greetings from Charlotte, North Carolina, the Park Church, where I'm under the leadership of Bishop Claude Alexander. I do first want to thank Bishop Proctor for the invitation to come to share. Lady Proctor, yes, she's my cousin. I remember, you know, I can share a lot of things about, excuse me, Missionary Supervisor Proctor, but I love her dearly, 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 dearly. And again, just thank you for the opportunity to share. I tell everyone that, you know, you got to give, but no one allow you to use it. You know, it lies in dormant. Bishop Proctor, he allows me to use my gift, and I'm forever grateful to him for that. So, thank you again, Bishop Proctor. And I tell everybody, I used to work with IRS, and I still, I didn't burn that bridge. If anybody doing a thing to Bishop Proctor, I would audit your tax return, and that's not a joke, amen. But thank you. And again, I mean, I don't need to be here today, because what Dr. Goddett has shared with us, I tell you, she will be at the park. I mean, they say you copy the right cat. And I mean, she is good. And that wealth of knowledge need to be shared in all areas, not for the kingdom. I'm going to go quick, because when I'm about to share, it's normally a two-day workshop, and I'm going to cut it down in 20 minutes, okay? And we're going to talk about resources, and you don't have to show that right now. You can take that screen off, yeah, I'll let you know. And thank you. Thank you, Reverend Blue. Thank you for your service here, too. I do have something I want to share at the end, and I'll let you know when to share that. My main point today is just to first, thank you. Thank the local pastors. Thank the obedient titers and generous givers who have kept the doors open. So often, we don't thank you all enough for your work of labor. So, we thank you. We thank you for that. And when we come back, when God wants us to come back, our goal would be to add some more obedient titers and generous givers. And I will start with that, because I think every, we don't like to talk or preach or teach about money that much, but we wondering, you know, why during the time and offering time, people give us those looks, like they don't know what we are talking about? And let's, I want this to be more of a teaching-type segment, and to give my leaders in the room, and even my ministers, and even members, some teaching techniques that we need to do. You probably have already implemented, but there's some more that we can do. The first thing, the first thing I want to share is, often I hear during offertory appeals, it's now time to give our tithes and offerings. And that is biblically wrong, you know, and even effective today, do not say that no more, because number one, you do not give a tithe. You return a tithe. And yeah, you might say it's the same thing, but no, it's not. Giving and returning, returning means it belongs to somebody. So, that means the tithe is not ours to give, but the tithe is ours to return to the Lord, because the Lord is the Lord's tithe. I tell everyone. So, if we can get that point first, that the tithe is something that is returned, that is returned, and not given, okay? Not given, not given. And I tell everybody, when they invite me to come, they say, Arthur, we need to do something. We need some type of capital campaign. I firmly believe that the first capital campaign at every local church should be 100% tithe in congregation. That should be your first capital campaign. What if everyone in your church was a tither? It's just a tither, you know? What if everybody did their part? What if everybody was obedient with the tithe? So, what you do, you start with leadership, you know? Leadership, you must tithe. You must tithe, leadership, you know? You know, don't serve me communion, and you're not a tither. Don't count the tithe if you're not participating in it. Are you with me? Ushers, don't hold a basket for tithes if you're not putting something in it. Leaders, don't choir members stop singing with choir robes on if you're not? Because we got to have our leaders. You lead the way, and leadership can curse your congregation. Yeah, you got to have the right leader, right leader. So, that ought to be our comeback, you know? And then, we don't have to wait when the church gathering begin. That should happen now. That should happen now, because just because we're not gathering, we are still the Lord's church. We are still the Lord's church. Know that. God shut us down for a reason. He said, you've been in the walls long enough. Now, be the church outside the walls. That's what you want to do. And that's what we need to do. And we need financial resources to continue, not to begin. We need financial resources to continue to do that. One thing I love about Zion is your line item called Ministry of Kindness. That's going to be more important post-COVID than anything else. That's why we need more obedient tithers. That's why we need more obedient titers and more generous givers. So that's M-O-K line can go, listen, God will help you when he see you helping his people. He will. He, I'm a witness of what's going on in Charlotte and North Carolina. When you start blessing the people who need help, you watch how God miraculously bless you. See, we get some, and I, I was told, I was told that the best visible expression of Jesus is not worship. It's helping people, helping other people. No, 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 no. Don't get that confused. Gathering is good. Don't get me wrong. I miss gathering. But if we want to be more like Jesus, we got to help people. And when God see you make a twist of that, and I'm not just talking about helping us, you know, the ones who come to church. You know, I save about a hundred eighty thousand dollars on my food budget. A hundred and eighty thousand because we was feeding us. So us didn't meet anymore. So Bishop Claus said, no, 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 we ain't gonna save that. We're gonna give that one eighty to the city of Charlotte, to, to the homeless. And, and for some reason, I don't know how, when you start giving to the ministries of kindness and different visiting the sick and you're taking care of your local, your, your local people. Don't get me wrong, yes. But God would give, make sure you would have plenty to give, plenty to receive. Because keep in mind, the people who are watching us now, they, they, they not from the old school that I'm from. Billing funds and, 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 and things like that. They no, 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 no. They, they about, they like real felt needs. They love feeding the homeless. They love billing things, habitat. Those things we got to continue to do. And, and when people see that, people who are watching you will start giving. I have a giver, I don't even know if she black and white, I don't care. But I, I, as, as CFO of my church, I study givers. I study givers. I got to. I got to understand their thought, their pattern. And we have this giver from Nevada. She come on. Now, I would grant you, our service starts at nine thirty. She comes on at ten fifteen. Hear me, hear me, hear me. You know, and, and, and she dropped about fifty, fifteen hundred dollars a Sunday bishop since we've been in this pandemic. And she's not a member. So we are, we, we have learned that some people, when people give that way online, leave them alone. Tell them one thank you and that's enough. Don't try to get them to come join your church. You tell them thank you. Because something she's getting, something she's hearing, she likes. And hold up, and something she don't like, she don't tune in until a preacher preach. Because we be doing a lot of stuff in the church that people don't want to hear. They don't care the group number eight having a missionary meeting Monday night. No, 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 no. She come in and believe when, when you in Zoom, when you in Zoom, you, you, the attention spans leave quick. You better not be long. You cannot be long. So what we do, we, we, we keep track and I'm, 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 I want, I want you to take notes. You keep track of your first time givers. See, I'm a firm believer, your best giver hadn't joined your church yet. And God could be allowing this opportunity through this outreach, when, when, when I mean on virtual airspace, that you can reach people. You know, we, we used, we used to leave the church when we have a little fingernail on the way that one stands for. But we leave the church when we, now I can leave your church with a little tap on my computer. A little tap. I'll be back when you start preaching. Because they obvious didn't rehearse this. So, 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 so first capital campaign, first capital campaign, a hundred percent, everybody tithe. Everybody do your part. Do your part. You make a hundred dollars, your part is ten. You make a thousand, your part is a hundred. You make two thousand, your part is two hundred. And see what God done? He has shut down the items, the, the competitors for his tithe for eighteen months. Can't go to the movie, can't, can't get a hot dog, can't, can't go to a football game. He shut them down. That's why a lot of churches are doing more increase because those competitors, those football games we go to. God's, God's trying to get us right financially that he come first. Are you all hearing me? He comes first. And the tithe, and you know, that's why I, I, I hate when you put tithe and offering on the same line because it's two completely different things. The tithe is holy and it's, it, it is set apart. It's set apart. So we got to show it as a holy set apart amount. Yeah. Got to set it. And then the offerings. The giving. And I'd share with everybody, one day, one day, I want you to say that, I can't hear you, but I want you to say it. I want you to tell your, tell, tell the computer that one day, it might not be Sunday, but one day my giving will be more than my returning. Because I rather give him more than I owe him. See, see, that, 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 that's how God gonna support the church if we in a building or not. Because ministry must go on. And I'm so glad that Dr. Godet said what she said. You know, don't, you got to keep your online giving. That's gonna be important. I'll have a, three of our deacons have already requested from Bishop Claude, can they become a virtual deacon? And Bishop said, sure. You got to embrace that. Because now we have learned it's not about gathering that much, it's about being connected. How can we stay connected? And I'm trying not to preach. Lord knows I'm trying not to. This is my personality. I get excited when I talk about this. So we, we, we got, we got to be flexible. And in the area of fees, I mean, online giving, there's one thing that helped our church a lot, Bishop. It's called a fee free options. Fee free, F-E-E free. See, because give a lot of, I love it, but there's a fee. Okay? I, I, I love my online, but there's a fee. And you're gonna see in your budget year calendar this year, you're gonna see fees. So you need to make that a line item and explain to people what that consists of. And I, I share, I said, Bishop, well, I don't care for that. He said, Arthur, anytime you offer something, that's the convenience you got to pay for. But there are some fee free options. The best one we use is the bill pay online. I don't know if you familiar with bill pay. Go to your local bank. They have it. It's like you writing a check to your church. And tell your neighbor is fee free. Twenty-five percent of our income is still coming from mail-ins. That's why I stay on my staff. You check that mailbox daily. Because my accountant staff, now we have become pastors almost because they communicate, communicate through their giving sometime in the comment session, section. And it, we, we must communicate back. Now think of mine, now most, most of us, we, we are introverts. Come on accountants, we, 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 we loving this pandemic. I'm fine at home for another year. We are introverts. But we have become introverts and communicate and pray because we get prayer responses. So my accountant staff have become pastors, shepherds, Lord have mercy. And we meet with them monthly. So take control accountant, your, your accountant committees, your trustees, whoever, be proactive in this. Now, 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 how dare us talk about the tithe, the ten and don't talk about the other ninety? That, that's been a problem in a lot of churches. We preach and teach tithe, but folks still, we don't say nothing about the other ninety percent. Some people can't tithe because they broke. And some of us are broke titers. Because we don't teach in our curriculum how to get out of debt. We don't teach about savings. We don't teach about paying and filing your taxes. Let me tell you some taxes this year. If you wasn't a fowler, you missed, you missed a lot of money. You didn't get stimulus. You missed it. And for the business, the payroll protection program, the ERC, the employer retention credits, and then the EIDL, the economic injury to disaster loans. We got about one point two million just from that. Just from that. Why? Because number one, your accountables. See, timeout. We got to start making these contractors employees. Because you don't get what I just said, if you got contractors. You would get it if you have employees and what the government says, hey, if you keep these, these employees working, I'm gonna give you some money. It's there. It's a resource. But first, let's get back to personal filing taxes. I tell everybody, when we talk about the other ninety now, I tell everybody, you file your tax return even if you can't pay it. Hear me now, please write that down. Please file your tax return even if you cannot pay it. Because in IRS eyes, if you not a fowler, you try, no, if you a fowler, you are in compliance. But if you are non-fowler, you trying to evade taxes. You trying to get over. And if you do that for three years, you gonna be wearing orange, you be in jail and the prison ministry is gonna come see about you. I don't like orange. I don't like orange. If you didn't learn nothing in this segment, file your taxes. Comply. I don't care what you got, what you owe. They can't do much when you owe. But they can do much more when you don't file. And it's called evasion. Savings, savings, savings. We got to have savings. Forty-three percent of African Americans, only forty-three have a savings account. We got to save. I tell everybody, you save to invest. You save to invest. Well, Arthur, I'm just not wealthy. No, no, no. You need to read Proverbs twenty-one twenty tonight. It's not the wealthy who save. It's the wise person who saves. There's something, we got to have a savings account. And our goal at our churches, they making sure that every member have a savings account. The same enthusiasm, hear me now, preachers, teachers, that I'm talking about tithe, I'm talking about this too. The same energy, the same energy. You can't go lack on this. Because that's why people looking at you crazy like you speaking in trial when you ask for an offer. They don't understand. Oh. You don't know my story. I don't have nothing saved. And one reason why we don't have nothing saved because we do the opposite. We spare. Oh Bishop, wouldn't it be a good time to put, to put the Northeast District on a spending covenant? Lord have mercy. I'm about to mess up now. Uh, spending fast. To help us save. Because savings is an insurance and not an investment. You need that. And now we, and, and all these competitors are slowly opening back up. I'm closely monitoring my giving. Because I know, I know our mentality, hey, it's open now. I'm going to this game. I need to get away. I got to spend something. No, no. Priorities, northeast priorities, priorities. We need the resources. God need, God don't need, he need us to be obedient with the resources he have given us. Savings. And then it, and then the other one is, is the debt piece, the, the, the debt piece, you know? Uh, it's really simple. Because, because, because managing God's resource is really called a budget. That's what we mean by budgeting. It, you need a budget. You need a budget. Oh my God, we need a budget. We need a budget. And I'm gonna give you a, a one minute talk about that. One minute. Take a sheet of paper out. Let's, let's take a sheet of paper. Draw a line right in the middle of that one sheet of paper. On one side of that sheet of paper, put the words O W E. On the other side, put O W N. And on, on the right side, on the left side that you put O W E, list everything that has a balance that you owe. Because the Bible says, the wicked borrow and don't repay. Come on saints. The wicked borrow and don't repay.
That's right.
You put, you put that on there. And on the other side, put everything, hear me now, that you own, Lord. Because we got to talk more about wealth in the body of, in church. Paying off things. Having something, assets. Having the house. Well, Arthur, mortgage is a good runoff. That's a lie from him. No, no, no. Pay that thing off. No, you need wealth. Don't be buying a new car, but you might buy another car, but you don't need a new car. We got to get into my thing and we, and we got to think about more wealthy things that we, that things that we can own versus more things when we owe. Because I guarantee you, if you do that right now, you, you got a lot of information when you do it tonight on the oh. But very, very little on their own. Now Reverend Blue, if you can put that up, and I'm gonna end off on this. The, 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 the spreadsheet I showed you. Because this is the problem here, that, that, that we don't see this hidden demon. I call it a demon because it's a demon and I use this everywhere I go. And in this example, you can see, I hope you can see it. It's an interest calculation on a Visa card, a five thousand dollar credit line, interest rate sixteen point five. And this is Arthur. It was mine. I paid eighty dollars a month. And that was really depending on the balance. But that's how they compute this bad boy. They take your remaining balance of five thousand dollars and they multiply by the interest rate. Equate hundred twenty-five dollars. It's a thirty day simple note. They divide by twelve. So my first payment interest is sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cent. My payment was eighty dollars, but only eleven dollars and twenty-five cent went to the bill. Do you see that? I paid eighty dollars to see this. And only eleven dollars and twenty-five cent went to the bill. And, and then they, they take your, your second payment and look at the remaining balance, four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cent. Wait a minute, Arthur, I just gave Sears eighty dollars. No, they only decrease it by the principal. And they divide that by another twelve months. So my second eighty dollar payment, sixty-eight dollars and sixty cent went to interest. And only eleven dollars and forty cent went to bill. I have just gave belts a hundred and sixty dollars. But yet only twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cent went to the bill. Look at the summary of the four payments at the bottom. Paid dealers, three hundred and twenty dollars, Lord have mercy. But only forty-five dollars and nine and three cent went to the bill. And I still owe four thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and seven cent. Tell your neighbor, show me the money, Lord have mercy. And that is a shame. You can, you can take that down. But you are make that, that does need to be in our church bulletins, Lord have mercy.
Minister Wilson.
Yeah.
At this time, we would like to go into questions for you. We do thank you for all of this information which you have given. And individuals who have questions, please raise your hand. I do want to ask you this as relates to getting out of debt. How do we shift, if you will, the thinking process of those individuals, specifically this audience of individuals who are in the church to understand that we must get out of debt? And to understand that when the church is in debt, so when the individuals are in debt, that means the church is in debt. And that changes, if you will, our influence, our power and our authority to be able to do ministry the way God has called us to do it. Could you speak on that? And then we will go to the individuals who have questions.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Patterson. That, that's, you, you kind of answered, said your question, answered at the same time. But what, what we need to do is teach more on it, make it become very, you gotta make it a work for people. People will connect to you when you connect to them. We, we, we lose out on connecting to a lot of people when we just teach, preach, give it back, top. When we, when we, when we add something to that, come on, let's just show you how to get out of debt. And the best person to teach it was me because I was in debt. So, so we got to do, I say that to say, we have to do more teaching on that. Because the church, I, I, I wouldn't say the church is bound because, because of law. Cause the church, I, I, I wouldn't say the church is bound, cause, because a lot of members are in debt, I think we can, we, we can do much better. And we can become a hundred percent titers if some of us would get out of debt. I think, I think that, that would be a better cash flow for individuals. And the purpose here also, thank you, is not just for the church, but it's for them too.
Right.
It's, it's for them. We got to push that. We got to push that. That's why you, you, we preach, teach Todd with the same force as preaching, teaching savings. File your taxes. I mean, how many, have you ever heard a sermon on taxes? Not even April. We don't have, we don't hear that.
Rem Patterson, let me say one thing. I'm gonna interrupt, only because I want you all to understand how important this is. You blowing my phone up, wanting to get Rem Wilson's information to come to your church. Let me share what. At Pennsylvania Avenue Church, my last pastor, we had him come in for two or three nights, I'm not sure what it was, just to teach on this whole part of debt, and he decided he was gonna do, catch this, plastic surgery. You know what that is? Cut up the credit card. We came to the altar, it was full of folk coming, cutting up credit cards. Our offering first Sunday, that next, first Sunday, went up between, it was, I don't know if it was fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, and never came back down. Just that was the addition that we had, because persons took seriously the teaching that Minister Wilson brought to us, and I want to encourage you, but don't try to invite him and be cheap. You go, if you want to invite him, you make sure that you contact me, so I'll make sure that you're gonna do the right thing by the person who's coming in to bless you, cause some of us try to get everything at a discount. You got the preacher discount, got the old folk discount. No, sometimes you gotta pay for what you need. Okay. That's all I want to say. Go right ahead with your questions.
Minister Wilson, would you, would you finish with that particular statement?
I think I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go to the questions. The first person with their hand up, Brudell Cunningham, would you ask your question, please?
Yes. Good evening. We are conditioned, and we're taught that bankruptcy is a last resort. And I agree with that. But is it not a fact that in some cases, it's the only option that a lot of us have? Unless we have a wealthy cousin who's willing to front us to get us out of debt.
Right, right, right. Good, great question. And, 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 and I, I concur with you. It should be the last. But let, if I can, share my personal thoughts on that, on the matter. The Bible says, let no debt remain outstanding. Okay. The wicked, the wicked borrow and don't repay. It, it, so what do you, what do you mean, Arthur? If you go that route, you still should try to return it. You might can't return it right now, but it still should be in your plan when the Lord bless, that is repaid. Are you with me? Yeah, yeah. Everything. That's why we got to be careful when we get those letters, and they're gonna give us so much letters now, because interest rates are so crazy now. And they, 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 they know we broke, and they're gonna give us all the plastic money we want now. But we got to be disciplined. To shred that stuff. We got to be disciplined. And see, one thing, and thank you, Bishop, for bringing that up too, about the credit cards. See, when, when we cut plastic, one thing I did at Penn Avenue, I made sure that we had some people at Penn Avenue who can teach folks how to live without it. No, no, no. I can't, I, 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 I don't, I couldn't cut the plastic and say goodbye. No, no, no. You, i- i- it's an ongoing. It's a curriculum, if you will, that must be established in every church. Well, Arthur, Arthur, we don't, we don't, we don't have that person. No, no, you'd be surprised when you're pure. You'd be, you'd be surprised. So, so, so yes, yes, yes. Try to repay if you go that route.
All right, thank you so much. The next question, Mariette and William Pollard.
Reverend Wilson, would you say something about debt consolidation, the pros and cons? And also, what do you think of church credit unions as a way of teaching people to save?
Yeah, good questions. Now, you answer your first question. You said the pros and cons. I, 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 I do not believe in consolidations, because I think it's a con. The first three letters is con. Is, is, you know, the key is because, because you got to look at what, what you're doing, i- i- it's, it's a psychological, in your mind, that you got one bill, but you got a larger balance. And see, if you not disciplined enough, two, hear me now, keep that one bill and don't add more new credit cards. So it, make sure, number one, cause it could be a con, just like a convenience store. You know, they cons, they cons, they cons, hear me now. Make sure that the rate is low. Don't add to the balance, and by fourth, don't get any additional cars. I hope I answered your question. Yeah. It could be a con, that's my point. Yeah.
Thank you. The next question, Paul Gordon Carter. Mute yourself.
Yes, thank you, Minister Wilson. I want to say, this has been a wonderful presentation. It's something I've been wanting to institute within our churches, and I remember when you came to the conference with the bishop several years ago, and you taught about that, and one of the things you mentioned was the Ally Savings Account online. Well, I went out and did so, and it does make a difference whenever you can see that money starting to add up over a period of time. So thank you for that, and this is like a part two to what you did. So what my question is, how can we get involved with you on more teaching online, or CDs, or something that you may have produced that we can order from you, so that we can share this with our congregations on a regular continuous basis?
You, you, man, thank you, sir. Thank you so much. And you said Ally, you know, I still have Ally. The, the best too is Ally and American Express Personal Savings, the best. It's, it's zero point five, but right now, you're not getting much anywhere. But what, what he is saying about Ally is not a local bank, cause you know, you know, you have a grand opening for savings, and then the next week is a grand closing. And with, 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 with the Ally type of bank, these are bases on the computer, you know, and it's not easy to go walk in. So I encourage you, that you continue to use ally.com, awesome, and then americanexpresspersonalsavings.com. These are FDIC institutions, and the money's there. Don't you send nothing, you can have it recurring from your checking account. I love it. I love it. It comes, and it controls my, my wannabe spending. You see? That's the smart thing. So thank you, sir, for bringing that up. Uh, listen, I'm, I'm seeing nine hundred and forty-five folks right now, right in my kitchen. So, so Zooming is good for me, cause I don't travel now. I, 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 I mean, I, I'm the type that I ain't ready to get back out there, okay? You know, uh, cause when I talk, you'll see, you know, I, I, I want my particles of my mouth to get to you, and I want your particles to get to me. So this is the best venue here for me, and, and you cannot beat this right here, nine hundred forty-nine participants in the waiting room. So yeah, feel free. Now I can leave, and I know Reverend, uh, what, what Bishop Proctor got my contact, and more than happy, cause this is, it's passion driven, because I've been in debt myself. It's passion driven, because I was a trustee that didn't tie. It's passion driven, because I, I was the choir member who came to choir rehearsal, but then come to Bible study. So that's what God has given me, and, um, and, and, and I would love to, I would love to, I would love to.
Okay, Minister Wilson, we have a few more questions. Reverend Nicole Harris, and then Reverend Samuel Saylor, in that order.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Minister Wilson. Um, I have, uh, well, one, I really appreciated what you said about investing. And I wanted to know if you could speak to, um, those of us who are, are pastoring, are living in areas that are being gentrified. And I've been thinking about this a lot in regards to how to, uh, encourage and train people to invest in their own communities. There's people coming in and buying up properties in our communities, and we should be putting ourselves in a position to do that, so that we can, um, in a way, buy back our communities. So I was wondering, one, if you could speak to that. Also, um, I read an article that said that, um, people are in as much medical debt today as they are credit card debt. And, um, I wanted to know if you could speak to that as well. Are there programs to help people to get out of medical debt? I mean, you can't avoid getting sick, I guess, in some instances, and so, um, those are my questions.
Yeah, and thank you. Thank you for those questions. I, I, that's not my area. I, I, I refuse to give anybody advice that I'm not qualified to give in investment, or even in the medical debt piece. Uh, but I'm pretty sure in your local area, you get my email address, I can connect you to someone, okay? Uh, and that email is awilson@upbc.org. Awilson@upbc.org. Please, please contact me, and I can connect you to someone who can answer your question. But you brought up something, and, and Reverend Patterson, if you allow me, she, she, you brought up something about a debt. One, one thing, I, I, I wish I can give you twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, that was unbelievable. I was on the floor. That, that is awesome. But I can give you about twenty-five points to your FICA score. Write this number down, everybody. Write, write eight, eight, eight. Five, six, seven. Eight, six, eight, eight. I'm gonna give it to you again. Eight, eight, eight. Five, six, seven. Eight, six, eight, eight. Only thing, when you call that number, they're gonna, this, this is a legitimate number. They might ask for your SSN. Please, please, please. It's legit, it's legit. Tell them that you want to opt out, OPT, I want to opt out and receive in junk mail. I want to opt out and receive in junk mail. They're gonna ask for your mailing address, they're gonna mail you a form verifying you said that. Sign the form, sign that form, mail it back. Hear me, please. A month later, you'll see twenty-five more points on your FICA score. Now, this, what we need to put in the bulletin on Sunday. I'll put it on, yeah, it's things like this, you know, that we can do, that that's there. And we, 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 we have, we have, we have an IRS Sunday School class, we have a FICA Sunday School, and I teach them both, cause I, I'm a firm believer that this is, is Christian education. Not just tithing. Not just tithing. You got to have tithing, but you got to be fifty-fifty on this. So thank you for that question. Email me, I can get, I can get you to someone. But thank you for triggering that FICA opt-out number.
Um, wow. It's been like music to my ears. I really appreciate you doing off with, I want to, uh, our mantra is the freedom church, and part of what you're saying talks about that freedom, us not just having our dignity, our church started on the dignity of folk. And part of our dignity is tied to our debt, and we need to free that. Our family life is tied to our debt. I know, cause I, you know, cheated my family a number of hours being in debt. It's true, we can be set free from that. Would you encourage, uh, um, churches, uh, if they have the means to help buy back some of the high-interest debt from, uh, some of their members, helping set them free, like if they had extra money instead, and you had titers, say, look, you know, we're gonna, you got a thousand dollars in debt, we're gonna buy it back at a lower interest rate, you know, and you're committed to paying your local church. And then the other thing, is there any conversation you have about, uh, uh, encouraging your members to invest, uh, into financial instruments in their community, like different businesses that support, uh, their community? Can you speak on that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, your first part, first part. Now, I would not engage in some type of loan arrangement with a member to pay back, okay? But, but, when I used to do these workshops, they called, they were called, show me the money, it was called, show me the money. And what we did at our congregation, at our local church, we had show me the money birthday parties. We get someone who birthday is a certain day, and what we do, we tell that individual, bring me your bill, one of your credit card bills. And the money we collect for your birthday party, hear me now, we're gonna put it on your bill. And you, what if all ushers do that? What if all trustees, what, what if all auxiliaries just do that? You might can't pay it off, but see, you pay it, you put it on their bill. And what, you, you cannot feel, and I just think that's the ideal way the church can do it. No, not no, you owe us this. No, no, they, I can leave your church and don't pay it. No, no, no. But in love, we, we would do this. So, though, being creative with that. I forgot your other part of your question. I think, I think it was investing. I mean, help, help me out in your, your second part of your question. You, you mute.
Mute yourself.
Good. Okay, yes. Um, the, the part of churches being encouraged to help support financial in, 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 uh, industry in their community, businesses, and and other than that, making sure the community has a protocol, a church has a protocol to support the businesses within their community. Uh, do you have any?
Well, no, no, I, I think that'd be up to you. I mean, if that's part of your vision, is that, is that part of your, your mission of your church to help, that, that's fine. That, I, I, it's not for me to say, don't do that, or do that. I think that's more of a pastoral call. Okay? And I know my limitations. I, I'm not, I'm not where you are. But whatever God leaves you to do financially, you know, that, that's more of a pastoral call.
Minister Wilson, we want to take this opportunity. Thank you so very much. Um, your, your presentation is definitely excellent. Um, the answer was just spot on. Um, you know, I've had an opportunity to sit under your tuition before, and one of the things that, uh, we didn't get a chance to really talk about a little bit, uh, was the part that you deal with, how to act your wage. You know, that, you know, that, that is really, uh, essential as well in terms of what, you know, individuals are asking, and what it means to have a church that's one hundred percent tithing. And so we are going now to turn it back over, but we want to thank you so very much. Uh, there are a few more questions, I know, but our time is running out. Individuals are asking whether or not, um, you are able to do workshops, et cetera, online. I believe that answer is yes, most definitely. So the answer to that is yes. His contact information is in the chat. His contact, contact information is in the chat. If you want to just give us that contact information one more time, and so those individuals can reach out to Bishop Proctor first.
Oh, that.
Before they reach out to you. Yes.
And I, no, I respect, number one, is out of respect. Amen? Is out of respect. Is that, and again, again, my email is awilson@upbc.org. I don't give my cell number out, because I, I'm not a talker, and you know, you know, when people call you, they say, we're starter author in nineteen oh four. I don't have time, I gotta work the claw, that is. You know, but I will respond to emails, amen.
Thank you so much. Come on, let's, can we do this? Can we just give, oh, did we get information today?
Bishop, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I, 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 listen, the topic that we have just went over is hard stuff. But I learned at early age that laughter softens the heart. So that's why I try to make it funny, cause I hope it's your heart is softening, but it's not funny. Are y'all with me? But you got to breathe, you know, you, I, I've been in your place, I know what it feel like living paycheck before paycheck. So that's where the laughter come, okay? Just want to.
Well, look, uh, he's coming back to us. I'm getting all these, uh, messages of how you all want to do this again, how important it is. Whoever came up with this idea is a genius. Let's just say a genius. But, uh, it's so important for us to do these kinds of things. So when we're talking about not going back into the building, you just heard him say, look, I'm not in a rush to do any of this, and I just got a, a text, and I don't want to call her name unless she tells me I can. But she's vaccinated, and she had to get tested for the seventh time, and she was part of a co-hosting of an outdoor event in Tennessee. And therefore, boom, now here we have another instance of somebody who has been infected with, uh, this virus. She said it's serious. She said, please keep the doors of the church closed. Well, see, this is why we were meeting. We wanted to have this town hall. We way over time. Y'all, please forgive me, cause you know me, I'm very time conscious. We way over time, but it was necessary that we continue to engage a bit, so that you can see, we didn't just have people coming in off the street willy-nilly. We were serious and intentional about receiving what we needed to receive, the medical, the money. Both of them, and, and here, uh, Rem Patterson talking about one more thing, he talking about live your way. both of them. And and here, Rem Patterson talking about one more thing, he talking about live your wage and all this. It's important that we get these things. And all of this comes in seminar form. You want to have him in, you want to have Dr. Geddet in because they can help revolutionize. They did it at so many other churches and are doing it now. I want to thank you for it. I also got questions as to how can we give? Because we spotted y'all. Okay, so you wonder how can we give to be a part of this? And I think our tech team has our giving ways. Yes. Everybody, don't be a parasite. Don't be a kind of person that just receives and never gives, even if you only give 50 cent or a dollar. Be a person of some integrity. Do that. And they asked me if I would ask everybody to give $25, $20. If you can do whatever you can do, you want to do more because you received a blessing. I got some folk here who hit me up, said, oh, you know what? This is the answer to what I needed for my personal finances. Boom. Give as you have received. Okay. That's what I want to say. Thank you also very much. You know, I've got to go to Larry Davis's third anniversary service that is going on even as we're speaking. So I won't be able to go on or stay with you all and talk and and chew the fat a little bit because there are other services that we have to go to, but I'm just appreciative for him. I want to pray for Nicole Rushing's grandparent because even as we were sharing together, her grandmother, she had to call the emergency services. She was online. The grandmother's legs and things started swelling, so let's be in prayer for Nicole's grandmother and for the care to be given to her that will send her back home to her granddaughter and to their family. We want to do that together. Have you all been blessed by today? Has this has this been a blessing? And what a joy it was for us to bring in some other people rather than for us to try to do it ourselves. Trust me. There are a lot of times that we want to have these sessions coming out of this pandemic. There's a lot we need to know. And I want to make sure that we do all that we can to empower us to help us become the people that we need to be. Okay. Thank you, moderators. I appreciate you. Thank you, presenters. Thank you, members. I'm telling you, I'm so proud of the Northeastern Episcopal District that we don't have to mandate anybody do it. You just come, you do what needs to be done. And I know all these folk who said they can't get in, and so I'm so sorry. But you know, you've got to come to church on time. You get to church on time, you'd be in. That's right. I'm I'm telling you. All right, I'm looking at several of our members. I won't call them out, but they just say, Selena and others, they just saying, hey, you get here on time, you'll be in. But we've enjoyed you. Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness. Let's keep everybody in prayer. We need to pray about these presenters. They got so much on their plate, but they're coming back to the Northeastern Episcopal District before they go anywhere else. We're going to just lasso them and bring them back to help us because this material has been so absolutely rich. And I thank God for you. Now, Father, we know that we're over time with man, but we do understand that we're right on time with you. Thank you for the hearts that have been open. The ears of our understanding have been opened. We thank you for what has been poured into us, and we pray now that you would pour into them more of your spirit, that they may help more people in your kingdom and those outside of the kingdom that we must reach and bring in. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus's name. Amen. God bless you all. I love you all. I look forward to seeing us real soon, real soon, getting together again.
Bishop, they want to know how to submit their proposals.
Janet, where's Janet Jones? Reverend Janet Jones, come on, highlight Reverend Janet Jones. She's the head of our task force. And you talk about some excellent material that they brought to us. Oh, my goodness, they have excellent material. She's going to tell you how to submit your proposal to them. We're going to go through that process. It's going to go to them. And they're going to look it over, but trust me, don't rush to get into a space that you cannot sanitize and disinfect. They have all of that in their proposal that they share with me. I am so proud of them. That work they did is excellent. But even with that, and that was before Delta variant came along. So we have something else we have to deal with now, and I want you all to be prepared for that. Do understand what Dr. Geddet says, just because you submit a proposal doesn't, and stop trying to sneak in. Some of y'all is trying to sneak under the radar screen. They won't know we were here. They won't. And then somebody gets sick and die, mama die, and their children who don't go to church want to sue the bishop. The bishop told them to come in. The bishop has said, keep these doors closed until we have the okay from the task force and a review and know what's going on in our communities. I do not want to lose, and you know, in our area, I've lost two of my armor bearers who were right with me up in my room, in my wife's room, taking her where she need to go. All of this. It's been very close and it's very important that we make sure that we follow the good advice that we've received. Okay. I think Dr. Geddet has one last announcement that she wants to share. It's coming through, and then we're going. You all stay on as long as you want, kind of share with each other, tag team until they cut us off because we only have so much time. But come right on. There she is right there. I'll see you all later. I've got to go into this anniversary service. Amen. Come on.
Amen. I just wanted to say with the excellent presentation by Reverend Wilson, and I also want to say with our my other company, my consulting firm, we do work with Presiding Elder Kevin Copley and Pastor Nicole Harris. And I wanted to use this time to make the announcement that we wrote a grant for Presiding Elder Copley. And he was just awarded in his church dorm memorial $20,000, and we're mailing that check as well. So I thought it was a great time to announce.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you, Dr. Goodday. You didn't tell tell them also about the $300,000 that you got from my home church, where my daddy is, was People's AME Zion Church. They got that money. And some other things going on. So please let them know that this is happening now.
Well, if I don't know if the pastor made the announcement or not, so I know this is a new one, and I wanted to make sure I thank Pastor Copley for trusting us with his services. And we appreciate that. So again, wonderful, excellent financial presentation, and it helped me. And I also want to be where want you to be where that we also do other things on the consulting side, but Bishop Proctor told me to make sure I just focus on the COVID side. So congratulations, Pastor Copley. I wanted to share that during this service. God bless you, everyone.
For those who ask about where to send your proposals, I put it in the chat, an email. And the proposal is not just getting your facility prepped, but also how to maintain it. And so that's it.
Could you give it verbally as well for those who have called in?
Okay, it's it's the letter S. A A M E Z, Shrewsbury Avenue, AME Zion at two, S A A M E Z 285 at gmail dot com.
Is it all Reverend Jones?
It's it should be in the, if you look in the directory, the information is there.